Evening and welcome to the Wednesday, November 29th, 2025 Select Board Meeting at 7:00 PM at the Upon Aquit Regional High School Library at 100 Howland Road in Lakeville. Is anyone else recording this meeting besides Lake Cam? Seeing no one, I would like to go to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I'd like to call to order the Lakeville Select Board, starting at that end.
Hunt, present.
Blanca here.
Indita here.
Carbone here.
All right. Our first item up for bids is meet with the Lakeville members of the Freetown Lakeville School Committee to appoint a member to fill the vacant position. I'd invite the school committee members to come up and have a seat.
Are they going to end session?
No, they're not in session. This is just the Lakeville members.
Have any forum?
No.
Because all four of them?
Nope.
Very good.
There's only three.
And the candidates are just the members?
Just the members.
Don't worry, we'll get to you. We'll get to you for sure.
That was like, I don't know.
We appreciate the eagerness.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much for joining us today. So as most of you know, we have a vacancy on the school committee, and when that happens, we get both boards together to decide who is going to represent Lakeville in the regional school committee. We had four, correct? Just four people? Or did we have any more that dropped out?
One dropped out.
One dropped out. So we had four people interested in helping serve our community. And could I just wave to see if you're here? One, two, three?
Three.
Three?
Yep.
Okay. So I will invite them up in a minute, but I just wanted to give everyone a chance to express what they are looking for in their next committee member. I don't think we've done this before. I think it's just helpful. We have new members on the board, and we're trying to find our rhythm and our way on how we want to add people into our tight-knit community. And I think one step would be inviting everyone to come to the meeting, and then giving a chance for the people on the committees that are appointing them to have a conversation, and then allowing them to tell a little bit about themselves if they'd like. So I'd like to start with the school committee. Can you introduce yourself? We don't have name tags for you. You introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about what you're looking for in a school committee member.
Yeah, Carolina Hernandez. I think someone that represent Lakeville, that represent the values of this community, and also they have some knowledge in the know-how on how the committee should function. I think someone that represent the interest of the children, that will be very important.
Great.
Hi, Melinda Richards. I think we're looking for someone who is really willing to collaborate with the group and work together, and, you know, be willing to show. There's a lot to being on the school committee, so being willing to show up as much as your schedule will allow does take a good amount of your extra time, especially in the evenings. And yeah, just obviously somebody who is looking to, you know, make things better in the best interest of those students.
Excellent.
Hey, my name is Steve Sylvia. I'm the current vice chair of the school committee. I am certainly looking for someone that's student and staff-centered to support the school, somebody who's invested in the community, somebody who has great experience in life as a member of the town, but also somebody that can make difficult decisions. Obviously, we have some budget conversations coming up, but somebody who has the ability to say no and make good decisions, but being mindful of keeping students in the center of everything.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking to see if we have anybody that has had any involvement with the school committee in the past. Have they been watching meetings? Have they attended any meetings? And then anybody that may have any relationship with anyone on the board now, on the meetings, the committee now.
Mr. Blanca?
Yeah, so I echo a lot of sentiments that's already been expressed here. Again, somebody who's dedicated, somebody who can contribute and help ensure that our budget, school budget, is a sustainable budget. Anybody who's been following me know that that's something I've been focused on over the past few years, starting with my experience on the finance committee. So again, that's, and at the same time balancing and ensuring that we still continue to offer the quality education that our students deserve.
Excellent. Number Carbone.
So as Madam Chair has indicated, that this is to fill a vacancy that we currently have on our Lakeville side of the table. And this vacancy would be through, the appointment would be through the next election, which would be April. So I would be interested in understanding if the candidate that would be appointed would be interested in running for the seat, because we're finishing a term right now. So that come April, it would be then a three-year seat at that point, if I'm not mistaken. So that would be important to me. I'm looking for somebody that is willing to ask questions, open-ended questions, to try to drive an understanding. It is very complex, as you had pointed out. There's a lot of moving parts here. You know, having served on that school committee, I understand, and it took me years to get really grounded and founded. So I would just think that through this appointment, somebody that's willing to engage and ask a lot of open-ended questions. Obviously, you know, I support everything that everybody else has said up to this point, somebody that's willing to be, you know, supportive for our students and staff. And so, yeah, that's it.
Fantastic. And for me personally, all these ideas expressed are very relevant, but a lot of what Steve had said resonates with me as far as, you know, bringing that expertise, being able to have hard conversations, being able to distinguish a want from a need, and then being able to not know everything on the first day, but dig in as much as you possibly can. We know everyone's not a school committee expert when they walk in the door. It's very rare to find someone that's been on a school committee before. That's not the level expertise, but it is incumbent on whoever comes in to really get their own education and dive right in and be able to be a good partner with other people. Otherwise, the oppositional strategy, I'd never see working on any board, committee, or commission. With that being said, I would like to invite the members to come up one by one to speak if they so desire. If you don't want to, just say no thank you, no pressure whatsoever. First person on the list is Derek Madeiras. Would you like to have a seat right there?
Sure.
Thank you. Would you introduce yourself and tell us a little about yourself and whatever you'd like the boards to know?
Sure. My name's Derek Madeiras. What am I going to say? I work at South Coast Health, a radiology PA. Been there for six years. I'm from Taunton originally, but my wife's from Lakeville. We moved to Lakeville in 2019, so lived there ever since. My son's a freshman at Old Colony. My daughter is very young too, but obviously will be in the school system at some point. My reason for showing interest, and I'm, as you said, don't have a lot of knowledge on any type of school committee information, but I am eager and interested to learn about, you know, it in general, and I think it's an important aspect of the community in general, especially going to the future. Me personally, having obviously kids that are in the school and will be, and then potentially obviously grandkids and things like that, hopefully in the future. Somewhat involved, I do help with teaching soccer at Freetown, Free Lake United. I've done that for a few years now, so I do try my best to get involved within the community, but this seemed like a good opportunity to try to get involved even at a greater level. Never personally been on it, but I'm definitely a person that works collaboratively every day with doctors, nurses, and colleagues of mine. So I'm used to working on a team, and I've helped, you know, run teams for like six years now, obviously with the soccer, and helping in that way.
Great. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so. I think I am very open into working, like I said, with a team orientation, you know, team-oriented perspective and, you know, I can't think of anything else, obviously. I have read a bunch of the things about what the school committee involved, but it was kind of a newer thing to me, and I kind of dug into it a little bit, but it was a short timeframe, so it wasn't like I had a ton of time, especially with work and other, obviously, things like kids and stuff like that. But, you know, I'm pretty dedicated when I come to something that I do want to do.
Great.
And I would be obviously open to like seeing how the role is, and my plan would be to obviously continue and run for it in April, I think you said, for the three-year term.
Fantastic. Does anyone want to ask any short questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Madeiras.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Kim Chamberlain?
She dropped out.
Oh, she's the one that dropped out. Thank you. Becky Cushing. Could you introduce yourself for the record?
Yes, absolutely. Becky Cushing, I'm used to saving my street, so Sherwood Lane, Lakeville. Nice to see you all. I think I know most of you just from being pretty active in the community. If I haven't met you yet face-to-face, great to meet you. I prepared a few words if I can share those, and then happy to field any questions. So first, I'd just like to thank you all for the opportunity to interview and considering me for this open position on the school committee. I grew up in Lakeville and chose to return to Lakeville in 2009 to raise my family. I now have a sophomore and a senior here at Upon Aquit. I hold a Master's of Arts in Education and currently work in the technology field. Just to expand on that a little bit, kind of what you were saying about not necessarily knowing everything about the school committee right away, I worked in higher ed right after grad school, and I now manage a lab information system. So I took a pretty big pivot, but I was very self-taught and able to adjust. Throughout my children's time in the district, I've remained actively involved in volunteering and community support. I have volunteered continuously within the PTO and within the school since my children started at Upon Aquit. I currently serve, I'm currently serving in my third year as the, on the executive board as the president of the Upon Aquit Athletic Boosters Club. In addition, I also served as a parent and community representative on the superintendent search committee, and I was invited to join the Capitol Committee presentations as a member of the community also. I make it a priority to stay informed by attending school committee meetings whenever possible or watching a recorded session on Lake Cam, just to keep active and engaged in what's going on. I think everyone would agree that our nation, state, district are all navigating significant budgetary challenges. In my professional role, I'm often asked to do less with more, so I take pride in making thoughtful, creative decisions that help my team achieve strong outcomes, even despite a lot of constraints. So when I was thinking about coming to the interview and how I would answer and what I would say, I thought, well, I consider myself really student-focused, so I actually brought something to share. I won't read everything out loud, but I asked, you know, a group of people in the community that I know kind of to read the mission statement to their kids and ask them, hopefully, why, but that they think that I would be a good person for this position in interim. And then to answer your question, I would definitely, I think this is a great time for me to see if it's a good fit and for the community to see if they like me in this position too. So I'll share these, and then if anyone has any questions.
Share away.
Okay. Again, it's just I shared the mission with some students and just asked them to make comments on if they thought I would be somebody that would be a good fit for this role.
Thank you.
Thank you. Silent reading time for a minute. Camera.
I printed it.
Yeah, sure. I'll take one. I'll take one.
I do.
Okay.
We can share. No, you can have your own.
I have plenty. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I think everyone's had time to read. I really appreciate the extra homework on that. That was very thoughtful. And now we have Lauren, is it Vegan?
Yep.
Did I say it right? Lauren, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. Hello. How are you? Thanks for having me. Thanks. So I'm not originally from Lakeville.
Oh, could you just introduce yourself?
Yeah, sorry. I am Lauren Vegan. I am a Lakeville resident, live over by Baldi's. We've been here since about 2017. Any other introductory information you want me to kind of hit? Okay, perfect.
Anything you feel is relevant.
Yeah, sure. So I did prepare a few things too, just that you can learn a little bit more about me, kind of in a, where my ethos is, I guess, on this, but then also I'll tell, I'll share a little bit about kind of what I do for work. So, you know, and I was kind of sitting down and thinking about this, why I wanted to do this. I felt compelled, I felt called. I have three young kids, six, four, and two, so I have one who is currently in the system and in the district, and then two on the way. So I don't know really any of you now, but I will. I will. You'll see me quite a bit. I'm originally from Michigan, so I would like to think that I bring an outside perspective, but I have been here long enough now to have some friends. I'm on the PTO. You know, I find if I feel like there's an opportunity to help, that's where I feel called to come in. Our kids are swimmers, so I rose my hand and said I'd love to be part of the pool subcommittee, so currently on that, we just were in our meeting earlier. But I really, you know, it comes down to, I think that stability and long-term success of the public schools is essential, and for me, long-term is my kids, decisions made today and in the next few years are going to be decisions that are going to affect my children. So it, you know, being new to here and kind of wanting to be part of solutions and part of conversations and how things are going, I felt like it was an important time for me to raise my hand and say, I'd love to help. If you need some help, I'd love to help. Like I said, my family's part of this community, and I really, it's not just about my family, though. This is such a personal thing to everybody, and that's what makes school board committees so important, is everybody has kind of an idea of how it should be done, and I think one of the most important parts of boards, advisory committees, any sort of public service is listening and being part of the engagement. So I do work quite a bit down in DC. I've been part of federal advisory committees down there, so I feel equipped and familiar with public engagement, you know, outside exposure, not for any political party, it's not a political thing, it's just I've been part, I'm in the maritime industry. So the, kind of all the conversations about maritime academies and, you know, shipbuilding and all of that, that's really non-party driven. That's just general conversations that I've been a part of and fortunate to be part of. Where you have really difficult topics come up, I feel like I am, I've been equipped and I've learned the skills to navigate how to ask questions, how to listen to everybody, to make sure that ultimate decisions are made in a way that accounts for concerns and accounts for different opportunities, different things that are coming up that are always part of it. Like I said, going back to, school board is so personal to so many community members in Lakeville and Freetown, that it's so essential that there is that engagement piece. I do work, I'm a maritime attorney. I also teach at Mass Maritime Academy and their graduate-level programs. I teach organizational behavior, which is a lot of kind of psychological business, and how do I kind of manage and navigate different personalities and how it works in the workplace in a professional environment. I also teach strategic planning, so that's another area that I have had a lot of training in, but then also can then teach. I teach down at Roger Williams School of Law, so I teach law of the sea, so I teach law students, I teach master's students in, at Mass Maritime, the emergency management program, the facilities management program, and the maritime business program. I also teach for Endicott College, they have an MBA program. I swear I'm not that busy, they don't run that often, but they have a maritime program, MBA program on maritime economics. But I say all that to say that, you know, I work in complex regulatory areas and complex policy areas, and that experience has really taught me how to navigate, like I said, these difficult topics. Ask practical questions, ask, know how to ask questions so that they have a point and a purpose and that they're helping to guide to the next step, and work collaboratively. I mean, it just, you don't get asked back if you don't work collaboratively in the federal space, certainly on these advisory committees, and I've been fortunate to, you know, return on the ones that I've worked on. But I feel like those skills translate directly to really thoughtful, steady, potential helping of decisions that are made at the school board level for school governance. I value transparency, responsible planning, making decisions that reflect both what the students need and then where we will be going, right? So not just in the immediate, but making sure that it also makes sense for the longer term. I'm a very positive person. I feel like I'm just a nice, normal person that's happy to raise their hand to help, but I, you know, I felt like I would, I would be, I would be upset if I hadn't raised my hand to say, I'd love to help if you need the help. If I can serve the community in this way, I would love to be part of it.
Fantastic. Does anyone have any questions, any follow-ups?
Just thank you for sharing your background. Impressive.
Well, thanks. Like I said, I swear I'm not that busy. It's all logistics, and I'm a logistics attorney, I'm a supply chain attorney, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. So how do you just choose one? Yeah? So we're very lucky to have like three people coming forward and being able to all fit the needs of what we're looking for, and we can only do one, and because we can only do one, we have other committees and commissions for the other two people if you don't get on. We do have lots of openings all the time as people transition to different parts of their life and go through it.
Make a motion to appoint Laura Vegan, the Freetown Lakeville School Committee, with a term to expire on April 1, 2026.
A motion and a second? Any discussion?
Can we put another nomination?
Can we do, or we have to vote on the one we have in front of us, I believe?
I think, I think you can get the nominations.
Who's got the rules of order?
I think you can get the nominations and then you can...
Have a runoff nomination?
Pretty much.
Any context here?
You can probably definitely do that.
Yeah.
It's up to the boards, I guess.
Could you open the floor up for nominations? Okay, open the floor up for nominations, and did you have a nomination?
Yeah, it's a tough one. I know that we've extended other committees before with all the people that joined, but I know we only have one seat.
Oh, yeah. The IT committee.
Yes, we did. Get everyone in. I'd like to make a nomination for, to appoint Becky Cushing through the term.
Do I have a second?
I second that nomination.
All right. So we've got two nominations on the floor. Is there a third nomination? Okay, so we've got two nominations on the floor, and do we want to do a show of hands? I'm trying to, I haven't done this one before with the multiple nominations. Do we do a show of hands?
Do the first one?
First nomination, show of hands in support of nominee...
Do we do a roll call vote?
We sure can. So this is for, I want to say your name right, Lauren...
Vegan.
Vegan. Lauren Vegan. Roll call?
Hunt, aye.
Oh, you start down there, sorry. Yes.
What was your vote? Order? No.
No.
Hunt, aye.
Blanca, aye.
Indita, no. Carbone, no. So one, two, three. Are they even numbers now? Okay.
Four noes, three yeses.
Four noes, three yeses. Next.
Next nomination.
Oh, I voted.
Was your vote?
I voted in aye.
Okay.
Becky Cushing.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Blanca, no.
Yes.
Yes.
What a tight race. This is just a drive. Thank you very much, Becky. Congratulations. And Lauren, I'd love to get your number and have some conversations.
I was thinking the same exact thing.
Oh, sorry.
I just want to thank anyone who expresses interest and puts themselves out there. It's appreciated on many levels. The ability to call, to serve, and caring about our students and the community and the school system is appreciated, so thank you to everyone interested.
I agree, and it's stressful also. It's like I've been up there on both ends, where being chosen and being not chosen, but another opportunity walks in the door the right after. It's that commitment to serve that's the important thing, and, you know, I'm not joking about your number. Thank you all so much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I don't think we have anything else to do for this, so record the vote for Becky Cushing.
Yeah, I just have a process question.
Yes.
Does the candidate one have to go get...
Yes.
Sworn in prior to the next meeting?
Next meeting, okay.
Yeah, they'll get, they'll get all their...
So the clerk will reach out?
Yeah, the clerk reaches out, actually.
Yeah.
Colleen reaches out.
Right, I was just talking about that. Can I just get them to sign?
Yes, you can get them to sign it now, so you don't have to wait.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you very much.
Derek, it was nice to meet you.
Derek, I expect to see your name on a ballot, running.
Oh, I'll be, Derek, I'll be calling you for something.
Yep. All right. We're going to move on to the Select Board announcements. Madam Vice Chair, would you be so kind to read the Select Board announcements?
Okay, so the Select Board announcements for this evening, we still have some...
Can you move out, guys? Can you move out so we can hear? Hello?
They need you to move out.
We need you to move out so we can hear the meeting. Thank you.
So speaking of current committee commission vacancies, we are still looking to fill out our playing card here, or our dance cards. We're looking for an associate member for our zoning board of appeals. We're looking for a member for the board of registrars. We have two vacancies on the cable TV advisory committee, one vacancy on the communications and community outreach committee, and an at-large member for the zoning bylaw review advisory committee. So if, and I know, again, I say this all the time, you've been thinking about it. As we saw this evening, we had some interest, so just reach out to us, our Select Board office, and your letter of interest, and get to come and get appointed. So any of these, the details on these positions can be found on the town's Facebook page or the town's website at lakevilleMA.org under news. We also have announcements for our second annual Snow Person Jubilee, which is scheduled for Sunday, Saturday, December 13th at 2:00 PM. for Sunday, Saturday, December 13th at 2:00 PM at the Ted Williams, correct? Yes? Town, the Old Town Hall. Okay, I probably just missed that here. There are still some snowmen available, I'm guessing, so for a $25 donation, which all the proceeds are for the animal shelter, Lakeville Animal Shelter, so, for $25, you can get yourself a snow person.
How much did we raise last year?
I want to say it was, like, $600?
How much do we, last year?
Thirty-two hundred and ninety-nine.
Yes.
Nice.
So, it was a great, great fundraising event. And then, we have our Lakeville Country, Lakeville Country Christmas Stroll, scheduled for the same time, the same day, Saturday, December 13th, from 12:00 to 2:00 at Ted Williams Camp. See, I knew that was something at Ted Williams. There is a scheduled rain date for Sunday, December 14th, so, all this information, I believe, is on our website.
Should be.
For more information. Also in the packet, and I'm not going to run through each of these, but there are some upcoming Lakeville Council on Aging events, so that will also be up on the website, and, you know, take a look, because I know that the, you know, the COA doors are pretty much open for, you know, anybody that's interested, so. There's also a survey, a trash survey, not trash, it was trash survey, so if you wouldn't mind, Madam Chair.
Yes, I will, I will take this. So, we sent a survey out to the residents that are currently getting collections, and I know there's been a lot of chit-chat about collections in social media, and then in person, wherever I go, about getting reliable trash service in town. This is not about the transfer station, this is about collecting street-side trash service and the interests of the people of Lakeville, receiving trash service from the town for a fee instead of through other private contractors, because we think we can negotiate a better rate, and that's all it's about. So, if you would please answer the survey and give us some idea if there's some interest in this, we would really appreciate it. I, for one, think it could be really great for the town, and I think it could be good for the townspeople, but I know people are conflating it with the transfer station, it's not about the transfer station, this is about, just about curbside pickup.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of other things, Veterans Day, you know, we had our ceremony last week, I believe Member Candido, Member Plonker attended and on our behalf, so thank you very much for that. Also, the Council on Aging held their Veterans Annual Veterans Breakfast. So, that's all I have, I don't know if there's anybody else.
Thank you kindly. Member Plonker, would you like to speak about the Veterans Day and our parking spots?
Oh, yeah, so, proud to announce that in collaboration with our VSO and Town Administrator, we have, we add up Highway Supervisor, Frank Moniz, we've installed four veterans' reserved parking signs at the Town Hall, COA, Police Station...
Police Station and the library are soon to come.
Oh, they're coming.
Yeah, they're coming.
They're on their way.
Yeah, so, I'm really excited that, and again, the Veterans Day breakfast hosted by the COA was a phenomenal event, well-attended, so very pleased to be able to support that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great job. All right, now we are going to move on to Andrew.
Yep.
Does it not have you? Town Administrator's report, yep.
Thank you, just a few quick things. If anyone didn't know, we had an election yesterday. The Old Colony Project failed across the district. In Lakeville, it was 424 nos to 424 yeses to 478 nos, and then there was 488 for the debt exclusion and 411 nos.
Can you explain that, can you explain that out there?
Yes.
How smart the people of Lakeville are, because they got the whole premise about the debt exclusion versus operating?
Yeah, so, it was about a $2 million, I would say, debt payment yearly, which would have had to come out of some sort of revenue source. For us, a $2 million hit on top of everything else would decimate town services, so the smartest way to fund that is through a tax increase, a debt exclusion. I'm surprised it happened, but Lakeville passed the debt exclusion and said no to the project.
Yep, but that's, that's the way, you do it for future votes, because we don't want it to come out of an operating budget if it comes back again, it has to come out of a borrowing item, otherwise, it has to be paid yearly out of the operating budget, and that would, that's the equivalent of the entire fire department, or, you know, treasurer, collector, and assessors, like, it's a huge chunk, so, making sure, even if you're not voting it, that we're keeping this town safe, the town budget safe anyways.
And it really is, like, it might happen again, but it was a once-in-a-lifetime election, I would say, to have a dual election like that on two different ballots, so I think the Town Clerk and Assistant Town Clerk did a phenomenal job, election workers...
Especially with mail-out, having to do mail-out ballots and how confusing it was, and I know there's, you know, some back and forth and stuff, but it all was really, at the end of the day, less confusing than it could have been here.
Yeah, yeah, it was a smoothly-run operation for what it was.
Much appreciation goes out to all the hard-working people for any of the elections, and the town meetings, and all of those things as well.
Yeah, right, and then the only other one I have is the Ted Williams parking lot finally got paved today, it's about 90 spots, give or take, that was funded through the Opera Federal Funding Program.
And it's fully done and drainage and all of those things, or they still have to work on the drainage?
So, the drainage is done, the lot's been paved, it's going to be striped next week, and then there's going to be fencing and signs installed in the weeks to come, so...
That is a huge improvement for anyone that's ever had to walk over there at night and tripped over everything possible.
Yeah, it's a great improvement, great job by Frank and his team.
Thank you to our DPW Director and everyone involved in that.
That's all I have for today.
All right, does anyone have any questions regarding anything on the TA list? Nothing? Then we will move on to the minutes of October 21, 2025, and any non-ministerial corrections.
And I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board and Waging Personnel Meeting Minutes of October 21, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing non-roll call?
Aye.
Plonker, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Item discussion impossible vote on the FY '27 budget message priorities. The goal of this meeting is to determine the Select Board priorities. You know what, I'm going to let you read this off, Andrew. I'm going to let you read this off.
Okay, so I'll read off of this and then I'll kind of get into the memo. So, the goal of this meeting is to determine the Select Board's priorities and overall budget message for town administration and departments for fiscal '27 budget submissions. There is a tentative meeting scheduled for the town administration to meet with department heads to discuss this guidance and overall logistical process for budget submissions. Has been discussed previously, fiscal '27 will be a difficult year due to a number of issues, which can be found outlined in the attached Budget Priorities Memorandum. In order for a balanced budget to be presented at the 2026 Annual Town Meeting, it is clear that some difficult decisions will need to be made. If there are any clear priorities or items that the Select Board would like to see within the budget, or highlighted, or whatever, this would be the opportune time to do so, and I can kind of go through the memorandum itself. So, this is generally the time of year, we're probably all, probably aware of it, where we sit down and go over what we want to see funded, or highlighted, or to go after. In good years, this is when you add positions, or you're doing big initiatives. In tough years, it's where you prioritize where you want to see funding, or where you want to see funding not be cut, so that's where this, the point of this is. We don't necessarily have to have the final guidance tonight, we can have it another night if you want to think about it. So, the first step of the budget process has been the capital plan. We received requests from departments on October 3rd, we have a meeting scheduled for this coming Monday to go over requests, and I am recommending 1.2 million worth of funding requests to be approved at this time. That's from a variety of sources, free cash, about 857,000, retained earnings, 25,000, and then other sources, which is grant funding, it's CPA funding, it's density growth, bonus funding of 381,720. So, the big, one of the, so, I'll go through some of the systemic issues, I guess, Lakeville has faced in the last couple of years. The big one is new growth has fallen off, I would say, a cliff in the last three years. I think maybe three years ago, we were around the 600 mark. I have in the report 163,000. Our interim assessor has since gone back and, I guess, whacked some trees and gutted some more personal property, and it's going to be around 200,000. So, the money tree's helping a little bit, I guess, I should say.
And can you compare that to, like, say, 2020?
Uh, I'd have to go back, but I would say it was probably in the 700, 800,000.
Yeah, so, just in case anyone wants to know, like, we've dipped down significantly in our new growth, so...
Last year was 250,000, so we're 50,000 off even last year. Because a lot of people see a lot of these big projects kind of being filed and floated...
But they haven't come to fruition.
Haven't come to fruition, and then even if they got the permit tonight, it's like years off before they construct and we actually start seeing the revenues. So, I'm not an expert on when these projects are going to go in, and a lot of it's market-driven, but I'm thinking fiscal '28 or '29 at the earliest.
Which we wouldn't see for the year after.
Yeah, exactly. Some of these projects include the Lakeville Hospital, Rocky Woods, Lakeville Country Club, there's other ones that are always in the shadows, waiting to be filed, train station, Holland Road. So I put down some of the balances in the memo, our free cash right now after town meeting is 1.72 million. Stabilization is healthy. I would say the Select Board and Finance Committee and Town Meeting has been diligent in putting away money away over the years, so, general stabilization is 2.4. Then our capital stabilization, which is, this is kind of rare for a town this size, is also 2.4 million. So, there's going to be leftover free cash at the end of hopefully this capital budget cycle. I've done that in case of any emergencies through this budget cycle, if we need to fund anything with one-time monies, which isn't advisable.
Which is not advisable, yes.
But, we can only cut so much, really, so, it's just there, just in case. I would probably advise, if we don't use one-time money on anything, probably putting more money away towards OPEB and both of these stabilization accounts. Some of the challenges...
Can we use it to pay down some debt service?
We could, we could, there's ways of doing that. We actually did that last year with an interest payment.
Trying to figure a way to long-term stretch out the dollars of the budget to get us over the next three-year hunt.
I think we have like a $300,000 mandatory principal payment this year we have to make.
Yeah, it's not mandatory and it's to be determined, because final borrowing hasn't been done yet, but it's, it's going to be in that ballpark. I went a little high to be on the safe side.
So, some of the challenges, there, it's across every town, I think probably in America, it's health insurance.
It's every small town.
Every small town, it's retirement, just costs are increasing, so it's tough to, in a small town like us, to pay for stuff out of our 2.5% and new growth when it's not high. So I think at this point, I would turn it over to the Select Board, maybe Mike first, to kind of get the priorities, and I would say any big action we take would have to be started pretty soon. So, the holidays happen and most people kind of hibernate, I guess, for lack of a better term, people go on vacation and stuff, so, any big action, we have to really go into action now.
Yeah, I concur, I mean, we're getting late in the season, budget season's here, so if there's any appetite for an override, operational override, or anything like that, the window's closing, and we know we're going into a lean year, as Andrew said, so...
And I know that we've been able to flex into our departments and cut to the bone in our departments, and the concern is the school budget.
Yeah.
As it comes in, and I will just speak frankly and empathetically, I'm very surprised that the school has not come up with a plan to address an override, as it is going to be unlikely that we're going to be able to fund their budget without decimating our budget. So, I'm expecting a conversation to happen, and I think if it's not happening organically, we need to bring some people into the fold and have that conversation, and I'd like to have that conversation at the very beginning of the year and not delay any longer, if that is going to be the conversation that we need to have about the school budget in particular, and what their plan is to address the shortfalls that they're going to see.
Madam Chair, I concur 100%, should we do that a little earlier? They are, by January, they're going to be...
They're off for December, if I'm remembering, I think...
School Committee?
Yeah, is that, was that the, I remember the cadence, it used to be like off for December, so there might be a little...
Even so, if we put in a request, shouldn't they honor our request and call a meeting?
Can it be the first week of December?
We can certainly try.
And invite them to one of our meetings?
Even better.
To discuss jointly planning?
Yes.
Because if they're coming to us with these numbers that, you know, if you've seen any transcripts and/or had any conversation, these numbers are unsustainable for us.
Absolutely.
And we need to be very clear upfront on what it is that we can do and what it is that we can't do.
Absolutely.
There's been some big, I guess, kind of overarching stuff going on, Old Colony. I'll speak frankly, it's tough to bring up an override and sink another project.
Yep.
They have teacher negotiations, so they don't really know their, they can probably ballpark their number, but they don't know it, they don't know a hard number yet.
We, we're in the middle, as you know, of the early stages of negotiating the next three-year contract.
Which is a very big concern.
Exactly.
For me personally, the town, and it's never about what people are worth, you can never pay people what they're worth, that's, that's, that's not what it is, it's working within the confines of a 2.5% budget, which Massachusetts dictates. So, back when I started being involved with the town on Finance Committee, it was 51, the school was 51%-ish of the budget, this school in particular, not all schools, and then it moved up to 52, 53, 54. It's 58% of the budget now, so, when you're thinking of that piece of the pie and how that fits together, the school continues to take a bigger piece of the pie, not because they're not doing anything right or anything like that, it's just they have the most employees, and that makes all, in the aggregate, and it makes all the difference in the world. We just have to find a way to either work with them or find other solutions, and the override conversation has to be on the table, just to be, I never like to have a, have something not be discussed, and I know it's unpopular, but I know it also has gone on in at least 10 surrounding communities in the last year and a half for the conversation.
Mike and I talked to our compatriots, I guess, across all southeastern Mass and beyond. I think any, part of any conversation with an override, inevitably, what happens if it fails, and so it's a lot of work to get, to do this. An override, I think the stats, like, they pass 17% of the time.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's a lot of work, it's pretty much, if we ever do one, it's pretty much all I would focus on, to be honest with you, so it throws out a lot of priorities out the window, and then we got, as we saw yesterday, that the town's residents didn't want to pay for a big project, so...
However they feel is how they feel, but we just have to educate them to, I think a lot of people are old enough in this town to remember when we had no police force, when the... to remember when we had no police force, when the state police had to actually run the police force in town. Not saying that as a, as a scare tactic, but there are cuts that will have to happen if it passes at town meeting. And we, and we don't pass the budget as a board, we don't accept it, but it passes at town meeting, that it forces us into a situation. And that's why talking about it realistically upfront with all the stakeholders way ahead of time is the only way to proceed with any type of confidence.
Now, that said, Emily, Mike, myself, Lacy, we can find ways to prioritize certain things. We can make a new position that takes two people or, we can do tricks and, there's tricks and trades.
We like tricks, we like tricks, and, and you know my thoughts on cross-functional people, like, and being able to be that support for more than one area.
Yeah.
And, and using, leveraging technology in, in, in a way that helps smooth the transition and getting rid of manual parsing tasks that can be done by technology. Anything we can do to continue to tighten the belt a little bit. And then I know that you guys have been doing your work on the study, on, you know, the needs assessment on the town in general. And do we have anywhere where we need to grow? Do, do we have anywhere where we could just shift someone from one position into another? Do we have a support person that could support more than one team? So, those are the discussions, just for me personally, that I think should be a priority. Another one, I'd really like for us to take a very close look at our contracts. Our contracts, our service contracts, our IT contracts. I, I, I've said it before, I feel like there's a little room to push back on those contracts. I'd rather be paying people than contracts if, if it came down to it. You know, I'd rather do everything we can to support the people that work for us. But some of these contracts just keep growing at 8, 10, 12% per year, and maybe we need to vet and look at some other, some other providers of that service. Even if it, even if it ends up climbing up after three years to get that one-year foot in the door type of scenario where they give us a good discount for the, for the first two or three years, and then they, they put it back up, we need that type of strategy. That's where we're at. I'm going to let the other members speak.
And Madam Chair, I, I agree, that was a very difficult time back in '94 when we were laid off for three months, and the police department was down to seven members, and the state police came in at night to cover the, to cover the shifts. And I, I hate to think about going through that type of stuff again.
Austerity, austerity, yeah. I appreciate that, that talking about it and then living through it are two very different things. Amber Plonka?
Because that's better than what you said, regarding.
I used a lot of words, though. I used a lot of words.
Brilliant. No, and, and I believe wherever we can look, and I have a lot of faith in town administrator and finance director, they will go through and they will look to see where we can trim a little bit more. I know there was a lot left to trim. I may be looking at these budgets for years.
We've been trimming for the last, you know, four years.
I hope the residents realize there's just not a lot of fat. I mean, my FinCom experience, looking at these budgets for years, it just is not a lot to trim, a lot of excess to trim, unfortunately.
Lakeville does not, and this is my opinion, obviously, does not have a spending problem. It has a revenue problem.
Yeah, absolutely.
Nope, for me, you know, thinking about priorities, it's, it's about not cutting staff and services to the, to the residents. So, I think we all feel that way, but I'm just throwing it out on, for the record, in whatever creative ways we can maintain that, I'm open.
I think that's probably the worst thing, the worst thing I can imagine as far as, you know, having to go through the layoffs and any of those things. And I know they went through it in '29 and 2010. Yeah, for, like, all across the town.
Correct.
I seem to remember town offices not being immune from that as well. And I know, I know the schools certainly weren't. Yeah, but that's the absolute worst for continuity, for services, and for the people and children of Lakeville.
I'll try to schedule the joint meeting.
No pressure, though.
Yeah, but.
There's a little pressure.
Feels like there's a lot of pressure.
Yeah.
But I would say, Mike and I and Emily and Lacy, we're going to dig down and try to pull some tricks and do the best we can to narrow the gap to zero, so.
I appreciate it, all of the work.
Madam Chair, so, there was a request from our town administrator, if we wanted to provide inputs now, later?
We can, we can send some later as well.
Okay. Question one. Question two, does our finance director need to do a little bit more analysis and maybe offer some additional recommendations to the board?
So, I would.
Did I understand you correctly? Did you say something to that effect?
So, we're, we're, we're starting to dig into what our options are and what we're going to recommend during budget season. My goal of this meeting is to say, is there anything, I'm just going to use Mike just because he's here, if we want to keep the finance director? I think, of course we do. But like, is there something that you, like, we have to keep, we have to add, we have to take out?
Yep.
That's what this, what this is.
You know, and for any vacancy and, and all that, that's a really good time to make those analyses, just for the fact that we're not impacting an actual job, we're just impacting a potential position. So, you know, making sure that aligns, and we don't create weird architecture while we're trying to do it as well.
Yeah.
I did notice the capital expenditures committee is supposed to meet on Monday, November 24th. Did we appoint a new capital expenditures committee?
I think we did.
I can't remember.
I believe it's you.
Damn it.
It's you, it's you. It's you and.
Mike Smith is on there?
Uh, no, they, so the, the town moderator picked two different people.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Or he was on there.
He was, yes, okay.
He's not currently.
He was. All right. Guess that's me, then.
Yeah, yep.
Good times, good times. All right, very good.
That's not a final one, by the way, that's just an introductory meeting, so, no final decisions.
All right, perfect. And does everyone look at the budget calendar? Is everyone familiar with everything that we're doing? Tax classification hearing, et cetera, et cetera? If so, we can move on to the other after I fully answer your question. So, if you would be so kind as to send out some suggestions on some areas to the board members, they can respond to you individually.
Absolutely.
But not together.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. All right, on to the next, guys. I'm going to welcome up. There she is. You can stay, too.
I'll stay, yeah.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time, especially.
Following that conversation, I don't know if I want to say.
Fix it all nicely.
All right, we're going to try.
All right, can you introduce, either one of you? Can you introduce this job position and give me a little context?
Sure. We just got notification last week that our treasurer-collector has resigned. She'll be leaving us in January. Very sad about that. So, what we have done is, we looked at the posting, it was from like 2021. So, I went in and I looked at Mass General Law and the treasurer-collector responsibilities, and anything that wasn't in the previous job description, I just updated to add into here.
Perfect.
So, me and Mike had sat down, gone through it, made the changes. I'm hoping yours printed in red?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so those are, those are just the additions, so, because he is the finance director and we.
Do you like Lorraine more than me?
She gets the special coffee.
She got the special coffee.
I need the special coffee.
No, I can give you mine.
No, that's okay.
Okay. So, previously, it reported to the town administrator.
Yep.
Because we have the finance director, I changed the supervi, reports to finance director.
And that's right in line with what we have been saying for having a finance director.
Yep. On the first paragraph, it's, at the very end, it says, maintains custody of the municipality's financial documents, including insurance policies, fidelity bonds, deeds, et cetera. That was the piece that was in the treasurer-collector responsibilities under Mass General Law. The next bullet point, the maintain a cash book, that was also a point that I added coming out of the responsibilities. Below that, negotiate all borrowing, prepare necessary documents and notes, and report the same to the finance director. That's an addition.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, I cannot follow because my document does not reflect any changes.
So, we have just the old document.
There should be a supplemental version.
Oh, I'm sorry, oops, sorry, supplemental version on top.
Yeah.
And, there it is. There it is.
I withdraw my snarky comments.
Is yours red now?
It's red now.
Comment, comments withdrawn, snark not withdrawn.
Please proceed.
And then on the following page, I don't know why the words are a little mixed up, but it says, when budgets are submitted, report to the finance director, there should be an R, the amount of debt and interest due in the next fiscal year. I have no idea why underneath it says main, that is not going to be there. And those are all of the changes, or I should say additions, that we had put in.
All right, so, question for you. Is this job a department head any longer? Because you can't be a department head reporting to a department head. Throwing it out there. Was that the intent? Because we are flowing it to the department head, or are we having sub-department head, department heads? Like, I don't want to make it any more complicated, I just want to get clarity on that for the, for the role.
I was thinking more of, it would be a department head, and it would report to another department head. I've seen that in other places.
I have, I saw it in Foxborough as well.
Yeah, I mean, our ultimate long-term goal is to come back and do a special act of some kind, but that's just not ready for.
Okay, so, department head reporting to a director.
Yeah, that's actually how I reported previously.
Yep.
So.
Just want to make that abundantly clear, and that is the same for the assessor position then as well?
I, that's the one that would have to statutorily be a special act because they're currently, they report to the board of assessors, not technically to me.
No, but they report dotted line.
Yeah, like a dotted line to Mike, yep.
Okay. Sorry to hijack. Does anyone have any questions? Oh, is this an increase in salary?
Actually, it's not. We started at the same wage that it was hired in 2021, but it can have a.
Oh, no, I'm not asking for that. I just wanted to throw it out there.
Same, same range from 2021.
Thank you.
So, are we looking for a motion?
Yes, we will look for a motion to accept.
Quick question. Don't we, don't we usually have a salary range? When I've seen these in the past, is there a range?
They have that little plus or minus next to it, um, yeah.
Yeah, but isn't it normally like you'd see 75 to 85?
We actually don't have a range right now within the town. Typically, the hiring rate is whatever the last person left as, so we started to create the range. So, if it was the range, it would be this 85 to what the current is making now, which is 95, 97.
96-ish, yeah.
Okay, so, right, and that's what I was looking for, this is lowest starting salaries in the current.
So, I think, I think it can be called out, though, in specific, to not move it past a certain point. I have no problem with it.
That's kind of what I'm looking for.
If you would like to make a motion and make your change, or you could make it like 80 to 90.
That's kind of what I'm thinking. Okay, so I'd like to make the motion to adjust the wage salary to a range of 80,000 to 90,000 annually.
Second. Any further discussion, discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Aye.
Plug aye.
Carboni aye.
And.
And I'll make a motion to approve the presented job description for the treasurer-collector position, including the, the range and suggestions as presented.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Aye.
Plug aye.
Indecible aye.
Carboni aye.
Now, I have a question. Now, as this role is rolling up now under the financial director, is there an opportunity in the current architecture to make some changes? Just having some support changes?
Yeah, there's always room, depending on circumstances.
Okay. Keep it in mind, keep it as part of the options. Appreciate everyone being open-minded. Moving on to.
Thank you.
Oh, you get to go now?
She's leaving.
Um, discussion, possible vote on town council, request for legal services document. So, after we submitted the RFP, I got a call from KP Law, and I had said there were some enhancements that could be done in some of the services that they provide. And one of them was their billing practices. And I didn't ask them to do anything, I just told them what, what we had discussed at our meeting about the, the billing not being really reflective, and it's hard to trace, and all of those things. So, they came back and they sent Andrew a message about that they're going to fix that, and something that they thought would be helpful going forward, and that would be the request for legal services document.
More papers.
More paper, more paper. We would probably put this on a form somewhere.
It would be an electronic form.
Electronic, yes. I'm, I'm, I know you've got this, I know you've got this. But this will help keep up track.
With the processes.
So, we're following a process on the Select Board.
But the other boards and committees made this call.
Yep.
KP Law.
Yes. They sometimes reach out to Andrew?
Most of the time they do, but there's, there's sometimes like an informal understanding that they can, and then.
Yeah, we just want it formalized.
It really should be formalized, and I should approve every single request.
This will be required for all boards and committees?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah. I thought it was a good suggestion, and.
I agree.
Put it on.
Yep.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Yep. We'll have a motion to approve the request for legal services document as presented.
Seconded.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Aye.
Plug aye.
Indecible aye.
Carboni aye.
Let me take this out of order and move to the Christmas stroll event. Item number five, discussion and possible vote to use the Select Board gift account for the Lakeville stroll event. As you heard in our Select Board announcements, there is an event being held at Ted Williams Camp on December 13th, which is the Christmas stroll. This is the first time this event will be happening. We had a snow person event last year, but it didn't have a Christmas stroll component to it. The police chief has reviewed the event and is recommending a police detail in order to secure and properly flow traffic around the event. Cost of the detail is $258. The request is for $258 to be spent out of the Select Board gift account for this purpose. So, it's not an explicitly town-sponsored event, but it does bring out residents for the benefit of the community, and it could be a recurring annual event. So, thoughts on this? The Select Board gift account is actually, the only thing we use it for is plants and stuff around town, and doing like the buckets around town, any type of work on like the Veterans Monument and stuff like that, and for employee appreciation. That's what we've traditionally used it for. I don't know that there's anything else that has been used for. We did have like, at one time, we appropriated money. We did have like, at one time, we appropriated money in an EAP program, but we were using some of those. For those at home, an EAPO program is a referral service for, for our employees. But we ended up putting that as a separate budget line. I know we've talked in the past of renaming this from the select board gifts and grants to the employee, the employee appreciation fund, which would probably be the, the right name for it going forward. But the request is in conflict with how we deal with other boards, committees and commissions. And so we've had the Lakeville Arts Committee years ago. Yeah, Arts Council asked us to pay for some things out of our budget before. And I, I want to say there's another board committee and commission that's, that came to us in the last couple of years and asked for something. And we did not approve it. So this isn't just an approval for this. This, in my opinion, would open up approvals for other events. I think we have $2,000 left in this account or $3,000?
I believe it's about seven, eight, seven to eight thousand.
It's seven to eight, so we.
We only used about 2,000 for the employee appreciation event. It was hanging around 10 before that.
Yeah, so it's got about four years of employee appreciation events, plus or minus.
That was one of my creative budgeting things I'm going to try to do.
Very creative.
Yep.
Yep.
But Madam Chair, if I can, so I, I made a note on this when I was reviewing it. So if you go to, to the next agenda item, which is seven, there's a, a letter here from the Chief Perkins that talks about the cost of the officers. So I wasn't sure how the detail arrived at the 258.
I do not know.
Based on, it's, if you go, I think it's like the third page in here, or the fourth page, but there's a.
Five sixteen each. Wait, and for five, I think we'll need a detail at each end for five sixteen, so 1,032.
Where are you, I don't even know what you're looking at.
This one.
The one before it.
Oh, this one's Melissa Turcot. Okay. Two detail offers, officers equals 496.
Yep, and then there was a question here that if it was a higher officers overtime.
Yep, it's 699. So. Would you like to speak to how the number came up?
Sure. I mean, as far as I know, we were told one detail would be 258 and two details would be the five sixteen. And it is a, based off of overtime for the highest paid police officer employee. And they have a minimum of four hours to, even though the event's only two hours, they'd, they'd be billing it out as four hours.
Okay, so.
Two, and we were told it was fifty, uh, five sixteen for the two. And maybe that's what you're looking at where it shows the one on either end.
Yeah, and then in the chief's memo from October twentieth, it says two detail officers equal 496, but then highest paid detail officer equals 699. You, can you decode that for me?
Yeah, I think there was confusion going back and forth. So the, kind of the history of my involvement has been when I went to trunk or treat, I was kind of like white knuckling the whole time just because of the craziness. People were driving like crazy. And then I think Matt, Chief Perkins, had kind of the same thought. And so he saw an event, not necessarily somewhere, but in the same location, potential for just stuff to happen. And so he had started to kind of brainstorm how many officers it would need. And I think there was probably a miscommunication between myself, Colleen and Matt. So I think the number is probably what?
The 690 and up to the 690.
Up to the 690, yeah. Because he had told me one, I think, before and I just saw it was before this amount, so.
But we are looking at for, for two, oops, two detailed officers, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So would the request increase based on that or is, is the request a portion of?
So, so at this point, so just a little history, if I may, real quick.
Absolutely.
And Michelle McCracken and Sue Spaler for the record. Madam Chair, we started meeting back February twenty-five. We met with a, a number of people, the T I, fire chief, police chief, the D P W director, we had Nancy LaFave, myself, Sue. We, and we did speak about a parade, an actual parade. We got a quote for the details for $1,500 to do the precinct street. We came before you guys in July and you wanted a different route because there was no sidewalks. So just knowing the cost of that parade originally, asked the chief, how much would that be? He said it would be $3,500 plus the overtime for planning the event. So we basically were like, okay, too much, scrap the event. We were speaking with Melissa, the fire chief, kind of came up with a, a solution. What we thought would be similar to the trunk or treat because they don't have any costs associated with details for the trunk or treat. Only sort of a walking parade where we'd walk through, the people would walk through the, the floats rather than the floats going by the people. So we were asked to come up with a, a diagram. Melissa came up with something at first that looked like it would need the road closed. And then we said, well, what if we switch it to, instead of having the, the Ted Williams Camp driveway lined with floats, what if we just stick them into the parking lot area? So that's what we, you know, we figured just stick it to the parking lot. I thought, Melissa had spoken with the chief directly. I thought that we were able to use just the one detail for, if we just use the parking lots. But at this point, because here we are, it's November and we, we don't know who's going to, are we paying out of pocket? This is, you know, a free event. We have a bunch of people donating, different things, hot chocolate, munchkins, Girl Scouts are involved, high school kids. It's not going to be a big event. It's not worth taking hundreds of dollars out of the employee account at this point. Because we, we really haven't pushed to promote it either, not knowing whether we'd have to pay for it out of pocket or not too. So it's really kind of left us in a pickle where, you know, it's going, it would be a small event. Besides those of us trying to volunteer and host the event, we have about three people who've signed up. So for that reason, you know, I think we're, we're not looking to expend.
For $600, it's just, it's not. I mean, I'd put a donation can out there and take donations.
And that's what we. I will be your first donation if you would like, but yes.
Well, we had talked about doing donation jar for pictures with Santa, somebody in Santa suit, and then we'd use the, the donation jar to pay for, pay back. But, you know, hundreds of dollars is, is a lot different than, you know, what.
Maybe they're all like me and think, oh, outside, that's awful. No, I, I think you got a hard, it's hard to plan a parade in the winter-ish.
Well, we started last, last February.
Yeah.
So we were hoping to have plenty of time. And, and just for information's sake, I did reach out to eight different towns, smaller rural local towns. I connected with six of them. Rehoboth does a Memorial Day parade run by the veteran service, service agent. They have a very organized way of doing it. They don't have a police detail. The highway department closes the road with barricades and signage, and that's a free event. Plimpton, and that is on a town road, so not a state road. Plimpton, they do a Memorial Day parade. It's run by the assistant to the select board. It's on a town road. Police, D P W, fire, all on call that day. No extra money for detail, built on, into the yearly budget. Main Street in Plimpton, Plimpton is shut down. Dayton does a Lights On Festival for Christmas with a short parade hosted by the Holiday Committee, which is six members. The town clerk does lead that committee. It's not town sponsored. It's all donations, volunteers. It is on a town road, very short amount of time for the parade. They did say the police detail is, is donated time. Rochester, I didn't speak with the D P W. I, I left a voicemail, but they have a seven-member committee. It's all volunteers. So there was no one to speak with directly. The assistant, it was either the, the assistant town clerk or A T A that I spoke with said that she didn't believe there was a paid detail. But the D P W does close the road, but I wanted to verify that. I'm not a hundred percent on that one. Pembroke, run by town memorial committee, ten members. They do a veteran, they were doing Veterans Day memorial. Now just down to Veterans Day parade. Headed by the veterans agent on Route thirty-eight, thirty-six in the center of town. They do less than a mile. Police, fire are involved with planning. And the budget was about $2,700 for that parade, but they did have it.
Can I ask an awkward question? Did we ask if any of our police members would like to donate their time to it?
We did ask that question.
We were told no.
So, so D P W had it in their budget, said that, you know, they could use time out of their budget. Fire said they could do the same, but police said that they couldn't. So this is just, I mean, some information for you all, if you want to try to get a town event, like a parade going, that maybe just to keep in mind when budget season comes around, maybe just ask that they keep the line open for some detail, for a certain event like that. Because these are, you know.
We do want to enhance, we do want to enhance community events and, but it is hard when.
There's an expense.
Yeah, there's an expense.
And we're trying to do a free event for the community, so it's unfortunate.
Would someone else like to speak?
Hi, Melissa Turcot, Parks Commission. So this, the results of this, dealing with Chief Perkins, it's going to affect Lakeville Day and it's going to affect trunk or treat in the future. Because for Lakeville Day, we shut the road down, so that's two details, so that's at least $516. And in trunk or treat, we could probably do one detail, so that's 258 plus dollars. So it's money that, I know you guys don't have the money. Parks also doesn't have that extra money to spend over a thousand dollars on events. We can't be the only ones to eat it.
I do appreciate that perspective and I think we should address that holistically and see, you know, what we can come up with. But I don't think we're going to solve it tonight, but I do appreciate the, the perspective. I thought trunk or treat had one detail.
For trunk or treat, we've always shut the road. So then when we've been going back and forth with Chief Perkins, Chief Perkins is like, you can't shut the road without a detail.
Yeah.
So I'm like, I don't have that money to pay you. So it was either cancel trunk or treat two days before or go without a detail. And as Andrew said, right, it was, it was touch and go. Like, people didn't care that there were kids all running around trunk or treat.
Yeah, and that's, and that's exactly, and that's the exact reason that it's necessary.
Right, and I understand that necessity. And when we, Andrew and I spoke in Lacey, I assumed that was the issue. So I was like all in. I'm like, yeah, you don't want people flying through the driveway, that's fine. So when I talked to chief, he was like, oh, I think there's been a misunderstanding. It's a union issue, not a safety issue. Because the road has to be closed because it's in the union contract. Because it's a, what's it called? Public way?
Yeah, I mean, it's a public way and anytime you have like a big event like this, you gotta have guys come on and they need to get paid, so.
I'd love to see all the details in that, you know, make it, make it simple for me.
Speed bumps.
Yeah.
More speed bumps.
Yeah, but if it's a union issue, speed bumps aren't going to fix this issue.
Well, let's see what, I don't think I'm going to be able to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, work anything here, but I will let the, the board speak up. But I think you're bringing to light like a, an important issue about community events in town. But, but I'm not sure what the solve is at this juncture.
And I do want to just thank Andrew. He's, he's been very helpful and supportive along the way. I know he really wanted to see an event just as much as we did, so I appreciate you, Andrew. You know, even bringing this to the board, you know, if it's not even something that can be covered by the gift, gift account. I do appreciate you looking into that anyways because, you know, it would have been nice. But I think at this point, we're, we're just, we're not going to be able to. We'll continue with the snow person event, but.
Any of the board members want to say something besides me?
It's just not, you know. $699 now, it's just not in the cards, so.
I'm, I'm ten years out of a police contract, so I don't, I don't know what.
You want to volunteer your time?
I don't know what they read now, but I certainly would have no issue with a temporary road closure for zero dollars with zero offices for an event like this.
Is it considered a road? It's Ted Williams Camp driveway with parking lots. I don't know if it's an actual road.
Is it Ted Williams Drive or?
No, I don't know.
It's just Ted Williams Camp.
So the public way thing comes under invitees or licensees, right? So there's no, the, the camp is not, while it's closed at night, people can drive through the camp. It's maintained by the town. It's, it's not, you know, we don't.
Ipso facto, it's a public way?
But so are parking lots. They're also maintained at the town, so I don't know. Is it considered a road? Could we close it, like you said, with D P W trucks and barricades for a zero cost? I don't know.
I, the, where it gets me is the fact that you're not for profit. You understand if it's something like a triathlon that's going to make X number of thousands of dollars when they do it and things like that. This is a, this is to the benefit of the town at zero cost to the town. And it, they're, they're not looking to put money in their coffers. So I don't understand why something can't be done for a temporary closure. You can close roads with notifications. I mean, you, you see it. We see traffic shifted all the time with no detail officer. You know, if we look at the Candido Bridge, we, we see that they've, they've rerouted traffic there. There's no detail officer there.
And, and Ted Williams was actually detoured off today because of the paving.
Yeah.
We actually had a detail officer on.
There was a detail officer there?
Yeah.
But it wasn't a safety concern per se of people that was prompting it?
I believe that was the conversation Melissa had.
Yeah, no, it was a union.
Because I was thinking it was safety related.
Conversation I had with Chief Perkins was the safety.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Can we get all the facts bullet pointed? And we meet again next week. Maybe we'll have another discussion.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate all the things that you guys have gone through on it. Any more board members discussion, talking points?
The only thing I would add is it sounds like maybe you need to form a committee and then solicit donations.
Right, and I think it would have to be done as a friends of, and we've, we really didn't. It's easier to get people to volunteer their time when it's not a full-time commitment, when it's not a committee that needs minutes, agendas, postings, all those things, so.
Remote.
But still, I don't think any of us really wants that sort of commit. We wanted to, to just have a grassroots sort of good old Christmas.
Yeah.
Because none of us can, I know Lacey was talking about doing a friends group, but you have to find somebody that's not involved with the town to be the head of the friends group. And nobody has come forward yet. So one of us would have to leave our current positions in order to do that. And that's just not something that's on the table right now.
Member Carbone, did you have anything else to add?
No, I think that we can find a solution, you know.
Let's, let's, let's not eleventh hour this and see what we can do.
So. We kind of need.
Unless you, unless the premise is, because you, you said you only had three people.
Because we have, really haven't advertised it because we've been in limbo for so long.
I mean, we have gone a certain extent, but not, like, we haven't really gone out to businesses and talked to them in person or done the flyers like we did with the snow people.
The high schools, you know, already involved. They've got kids that are going to be a school.
A member in the audience that wants to say something, I can tell you have to come up to a mic.
Join the party.
Join the party.
Thanks, guys. What about if you had a sponsor?
You have to say who you are for the record.
Let me get closer then.
Talking to the mic.
Anne Trippenronsky, but wondering about a sponsor, a business sponsor.
So we, so we have been raising money with the snow person event that Sue started to raise money for the animal shelter. So it just kind of feels like if we now start asking money from, and we do, in order to raise the money, we have to be nonprofit. We have to be that friends of, we can't. So it's, it's all sort of a kind of.
All right, and the deficit is 699 for funds?
It's, yeah.
Up to 690, it was like, it depends on which officer is doing the detail. But it was, was it five sixteen to 699 or?
Yeah, I was told five sixteen.
Madam Chair, the high number would be the overtime rate of the highest paid officer. And it would be overtime pay if it is related to the town, if it's a town event.
But it's not a town event.
But it's not a town event, so theoretically it should be the base detail rate, which I don't know if it's sixty-two, sixty-four, somewhere there, times four, the four-hour minimum.
It's like having a police chat GPT.
So yeah, the low end was, what you're saying was the 258 for the four hours.
For one.
For one.
That's for one.
But, and, and not being. But, and, and not being.
So you may not, we may not need two.
But what it was saying there was two, so that's what I'm just going by.
We'll go with two, and if it's only one, then we're good.
All right, I'm going to table this discussion. We're going to find out some more information, see if anything's even plausible to work out. And, yeah, and.
I mean, I think it's easier to just tell the three people that unfortunately, we're not moving forward with it. We'll still do the Jubilee, but, yeah. I mean, to wait another week, because here we are, you know, so close.
I, I respect that decision. I, I think that's fine as well, but we should probably get clarity on this because this could, this could impact our ability to do town events going forward.
The other agenda item, Red Hand's Ruin was asked for one day. I hope they didn't pay a fee.
No, no, he tried, I wouldn't want him to. Told him to wait. Smart thinking.
Okay, well, we're, sorry to disappoint, so.
It is what it is.
Yeah, but, I mean, if maybe something can come about for, you know, maybe a policy or in the budgets for the next year, something that can be worked out.
Would the Parks Commission sponsor it?
Do you mean pay for it?
No, no, I'm just, if it's a Parks event, it's different.
Well, it was.
Well, you are, they are.
Yeah, so, once the parade was next, then they came to me and said, how can the Parks help? So then I jumped in, we jumped in, and worked with Chief O'Brien and came up with the reverse parade idea where the float stays still and the people move by. So we are like co-sponsoring it.
Where is the document that says you're co-sponsoring it?
The application has her also provided it.
Which we hadn't gotten to yet. Oh, okay, because it's on the next agenda item.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Because that's number.
And therein lies the town event.
Yeah, so then that's what bumps up that rate.
Gotcha, okay.
That's the caveat.
Yep.
Can we withdraw the box?
All right, thank you very much. Sorry to.
That's okay.
Yeah.
We get it, it's not easy to be in the middle.
No, but we should probably come up with something that's, that's more comprehensive and more user-friendly in the, in the future.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What do you do as select board? I cancel Christmas funding.
It's called red tape.
I know.
So, so the next council, holiday calendar.
Yeah, holiday calendar, and then one and two. We didn't add any new holidays this year.
Nope, same as the year's past.
Thanksgiving and day after Thanksgiving. And we do a full Christmas Eve and a Christmas Day.
Yep.
Yes.
And, okay.
So this hasn't materially changed since last year at all?
No, just changed to six.
Are there any questions on any of the holidays? Or any of the days that they're being celebrated on? Hearing no discussion, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
And I need a second. Motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call.
On, aye.
Aye.
Candida, aye.
Carbone, aye.
So we are going to table indefinitely.
One and two.
The Christmas stroll.
One and two.
And. The one-day beer license. Discuss impossible vote to approve upon a clip boosters annual holiday wreath sale to be held Thanksgiving weekend at the Old Town Hall building and parking lot and to grant the request to store the wreaths on Wednesday, 11/26/25 in the evening inside of the building.
Historic approved the.
Okay. Was there a conversation with the, was it a booster?
Historic, just, just store it in there?
To, I did not ask them about storing it in there, but there is no conflict with the, with the space. I did not think of that.
Can we make any motion?
In contingent on that, yep.
On their approval?
Yeah, just because they're the caretakers of the.
Right, I actually wasn't thinking like that, but yeah, this is a change from last year, too.
Okay. Any other questions of any other board members? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
And we're going to make.
The motion contingent upon just the historic commission's approval.
Madam Chair, this is, this is item number three.
This is item number three, appointments and licenses. Yep. We tabled.
So I should've, I shouldn't have rushed that, so my apologies.
Tabled one and two. If a motion, do we have a second?
Basically, it was just to store the wreaths inside, but to use the building is, is obviously ours, so, okay. All right.
Second?
Seconded.
Second motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Candida, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Discuss impossible vote, was it the same?
Yep.
Yep, so that's the same one.
Yep.
Back page.
Or.
Lakeville Arts Council.
Yep.
For the All That Glitters Holiday Shopping Event to take place on December 5th and 6th at Loon Pond Lodge at Ted Williams Camp for two sign placements requests and a community board sign request. So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
On, aye.
Aye.
Candida, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Appointments, we have a few here. Discuss impossible vote to appoint Shellen Rodriguez as the Shared Services Health Specialist with a term from October 1, 2025 through September 30, 25. There is record.
26.
26, thank you. There is record here of the Fran Lawrence from the Board of Health memorializing the recommendation on October 15th.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
On, aye.
Aye.
Candida, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Discuss possible vote to appoint Carolyn Mullen to Council on Aging Board to fill the unexpired term through July 30, 2028.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
On, aye.
Aye.
Candida, aye.
Carbone, aye.
And discuss impossible vote to Duela Monte as an alternate council on the aging board, the aging board, on the Council on Aging Board with a time to, a term to expire on July 31, 2026.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
On, aye.
Aye.
Candida, aye.
Carbone, aye.
And discuss possible vote to appoint Susan Esposito as an alternate on the Council on Aging Board with a term to expire July 31, 2026.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
On, aye.
Aye.
Candida, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Moving down to item number nine, discuss possible vote to ratify the approval of the request for a public way license for the Mullin Hill Christian Academy Veterans Day 5K to be held on November 8th.
Yes, that's right. You asked me to bring it back because it was under new business.
Okay.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion and a second, roll call.
On, aye.
Aye.
Candida, aye.
Carbone, aye.
And our subcommittee updates, we'll start with Mr. Member Plonka.
What's the first one? Old Colony?
It is.
Yeah, so we did have a meeting, I think it was back a couple of weeks ago. I believe it was on November 3rd, if I recall. And that was our final meeting before the vote, where we got an update on the MSBA approval. It was a relatively short meeting and it was a lot, you know, few final, an update on the final publicity events that they were doing prior to the vote. So obviously, everybody knows of the vote failed to carry among the five communities. So we are now waiting to reconvene to discuss our next options.
Okay, no date, date to be determined?
Date's not been determined yet.
All right. Fire Station Building Committee.
So we had a meeting last evening. My apologies to the public, but it wasn't recorded with Lake Cam, but we will have the minutes available for that. So right now, we're just waiting for some final sign-offs from Natural Heritage and just making sure that things are recorded appropriately, you know, conditions, site plan. And we met the GC last, last night, so they're eager to get started. And as soon as we know, I asked for at least a 72-hour notice so that I can, you know, work with our office to get some information out to the public that we're going to be starting. And we'll be working on the groundbreaking ceremony, trying to plan that, you know, around the timeframe. So we could, this could be in the next four weeks. Yeah.
With golden shovels? They can build the state?
Yeah.
We'll have to borrow some.
Do we have golden shovels?
I got some spray paint.
Always wanted to have a golden shovel.
So. All right, Technology Advisory Subcommittee.
Yes, we met, oh my gosh, when did we meet, Andrew? On, the 10th, November 10th. I had to reschedule it because I'm not allowed to meet on a Saturday. So we continued our discussion on the remediating vulnerabilities as reported in our Open Trust Audit that was done last fall, that was done during executive session. We also discussed, Andrew gave us an update on the town website, updated the committee on some of the technology changes I'm trying to implement with Microsoft applications to town employees. And it was a third thing, it was the website, maybe that, maybe I was thinking of the.
Minutes.
Open Trust, everyone didn't review minutes, of course, right.
Okay. Have we reached a quorum with the communication outreach community Subcommittee? And if we haven't, it's been a bit.
So, yes, so tonight, we, through our announcements, you know, we do have a vacancy. So if there is somebody out there that's interested in the communications, you know, I would say that, you know, if we can at least give this, you know, a couple more months, and if not, then we'll just dissolve it as a committee and I'll just move forward with working with the administration to.
Well, we had two, two really great candidates tonight that want to get involved with the town.
I'm going to, I'm going to reach out, so I would like to, you know, keep this going. But I know that I have been working with the administration, you know, just trying to, I guess, streamline. And so if people have noticed, we've, we've got more postings up on the website and.
Yep. Yep, it's incremental, but when we get that new website, I think that'll be a game changer as far as how limited we are with our functionality. I think we're probably one of the last towns still running on that version because they, they don't push updates to us. And I haven't seen it in probably five years for updates.
No updates, no trade, uh, you can't really call on.
Yeah, there's no service anymore.
And no service anymore.
They just, they, you know.
They've abandoned.
Yes, pretty much, pretty much. All right, Town Hall Building Reuse Subcommittee Updates.
Did we have a meeting?
No, but we did get funded.
We did get funded, because I'm thinking I may have missed the meeting. The article at Special Town Meeting on the 12th did fund $25,000 to have the evaluation of the existing building, get the layout done and so forth to give us a little bit more information for our next meeting.
I'm excited.
Excellent.
Economic Development Committee.
Economic Development Committee, we met on Monday evening. So we finalized all of our questions for the surveys. There'll be two separate surveys, one for residents, one for businesses. So we, we went through, it was a very productive but long meeting, but we identified all of our questions, so.
Is this going to be a survey monkey?
Yes, Emily is putting everything together for us. It'll be survey monkey, but we also have vehicle in which residents can do it via paper.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll have that all outlined at our next meeting, how we're going to disseminate all of that. We're looking to put it out in January.
Okay.
To get some feedback, so.
Are we gonna, thinking of putting it out with any of our documents as part of it? Like the town documents, or are we thinking of, you know, just going?
Yeah, we're just.
With a canvassing event?
We're doing our thing.
Okay.
Also, we, we also decided that we're going to host a, a business event. But we haven't picked the date yet, but where we can bring all our local businesses together, so.
Loon Pond?
We're gonna, we're gonna work on the location, we haven't done any of that yet, so. It was just a conversation and the committee's on board.
Very cool. Energy Advisory Committee.
Energy Advisory Committee, Andrew, I don't know if you have any updates on that. I know you, you guys met twice so far since we've reconvened and there was some work being done with some savings. Was it 174D?
179D?
Which is going to come back in front of the board at some point, so. Because I don't really understand it. There's energy geeks out there that I am just amazed and just overwhelmed at the same time with all the talk about energy conservations and, but if, if it's incentives and, and things that can save the town money and help our environment, I'm in.
Very good. 179D, I'll look it up. Look it up, all right. We have some correspondence, one's from the Buzzards Bay Coalition. So every year, the Douglas Family's Christmas Tree Farm in Fair Haven offers a gift of a large tree to the farm for 20 towns in our Buzzards Bay watershed. They're happy to arrange time for DPW crew to visit the farm or pick out the tree. I don't know that we've ever taken advantage of this, I don't think.
We haven't.
Colleen and I went out there, was it two weeks ago?
Yeah.
It's massive, trees from 10 to 50 feet. We were thinking probably 10 feet, we're thinking, we put a tree up last year at the pavilion, we're thinking of doing it with a real tree.
Could we maybe tie it into the event that's going on and do a little Christmas tree lighting or?
That's what we were thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be wonderful. Please let me know how I can help. Fantastic. At the Thursday, October 23rd, 2025 meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to send a memo out to the Select Board advising them that David Lodge would serve as the Planning Board Liaison for the Lakeville Country Club Committee. Lakeville Country Club. It's not a committee. Yeah.
It's not.
I'm just gonna cross committee out there.
Just discussions.
Liaison. And then Department of Telecommunications Cable notified that cable license with Verizon expires on 5/4/28. Boy, they're really on top of it, 5/4/28. Too bad they're not on top of it for other stuff, but yes, so we do know 5/4/28 is the day. Is there any new business to come before the board tonight?
Madam Chair, I think I may have mentioned at a prior Select Board meeting that with the request of a resident to be able to look into a Hometown Heroes banner program, similar to what Middleborough does, I think, did I mention, I thought I mentioned that at a board.
I can't remember, but I know we've talked about it, but I don't know where it's.
Yeah, so unfortunately, Andrew had a meeting with Middleborough Gas and they will not give us approval to install banners on their poles.
What was the reason behind that?
There's like five or six of them. Basically, it's.
Safety.
Maintenance, safety, things get hit. I know, he says they, they don't do that in Middleborough, they do it on ornamental poles in the downtown.
They do it on their light poles and Bridgewater does do it on their electric poles. I believe they have Eversource. And my assumption is that Eversource obviously allows them to do that. I know that Free Town has Eversource and Eversource allows them to put up their flags on their poles. So surprisingly, I would've thought it'd be the other way around. Eversource would say no and Middleborough Gas would say yes. Eversource would say no, and Middleborough Gas would say yes.
I agree. Maybe we start a letter-writing campaign to Middleborough Gas Electric.
I appreciate their rates, but
Yeah, they keep their rates low by not putting flags on them. Can we get a meeting? I would like to grab another. I would like to meet with Middleborough Gas Electric, just as another.
I can schedule another one. I, I had it with the general manager.
You did?
Yeah.
It's not sandy anymore?
No, it's, uh, Kenstone.
Dreadful.
Yeah. Yeah, no, they're, they're, they're good, but they were like
They're a great company, they do great things, you know, when I look at neighborhood rates that we get compared to other people, I'm very thankful for them. But I'd really like to find a way to work together on this.
Yeah, I can reach out.
Push it back one more time. Worst they can say is no again. Any old business to come before the board? Announcements on the next Select Board meeting date. We have a November twenty-fifth, and we're going to set the tax rate. We have one other item on that day besides tax rate-related thing.
Yeah, there's gonna be, are you thinking the first one with the split tax rate?
No, we were gonna have a conversation about the split tax rate, which is always a popular one. And then, did we have one more item?
Yeah, we were gonna approve cannabis.
Yeah, we have some HCA that has to be approved. I wasn't gonna add anything on that agenda, but time is of the essence. So just for the members here, for our December meetings, I really want to focus on clearing the decks and making sure if we had anything outstanding, you, you bring it so we can get rid of stuff, and then we can start working on all the new stuff in January and kind of make it like our, our new year. So if we have anything outstanding or things that we haven't got resolved or things that should come back to the board, let's do that for December. It'll be our housekeeping month. I'd rather have meetings early in the month and then take the last three weeks off for families and be respectful of everyone's time with their families, and then come roaring back in January with all the things we need to do with everything else. But please find out if we can have a first week of December meeting with the school committee to discuss budget prior to getting into a situation where we're both not saying what needs to be said.
Right.
Any other items? If not, motion.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
On, aye.
Blah, aye.
Candido, aye.
Carbone, aye.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for attending. I love having an audience, it's so, it's so rare at, at the end of the meeting.